Okay, if I saw correctly, I think we have all five commissioners now present. Is that correct?
Yes.
And everybody is ready to go, I would, excuse me, like call to order this August regular board meeting of the Urbana Park District Board of Commissioners. And in these strange times, our first item of business is regarding remote attendance, and we need a motion to move to temporarily suspend our own remote attendance policy pursuant to the governor's executive order, which is listed out here in the agenda. Is there anyone moving that we do suspend our rules?
I move to temporarily suspend the Urbana Park District's remote attendance policy pursuant to the Illinois Public Act 101-0640 and allow all commissioners to attend this meeting remotely.
Second.
That's moved and seconded. Is there any discussion on the point? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote again by board seniority, starting with Roger.
Aye.
And LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I also vote in the affirmative, so that carries unanimously. Next item of business is to accept our agenda for the evening. I'm not aware of any modifications that are needed, so I would entertain a motion for accepting the agenda as presented.
So we accept it. Oh, second.
Sorry.
Okay, that's been moved and seconded. Any comments or questions on that point? Hearing none, again, a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And again, I vote in the affirmative as well, and that carries unanimously. So that brings us to public comment, and I would like to ask if there's anyone from the public wishing to address the board this evening.
I think Johnville's the only member of the public in attendance, and she she came because she was invited from UPDAC, and I don't think she was here to make public comment, but I could unmute her really quick to double check.
Yeah, why don't you go ahead and find out?
That is correct. I am not here to make any public comment, just here as my first UPDAC checking it out. Thank you.
Well, and welcome to UPDAC. We're delighted to have you here.
Thank you. I am so excited as well.
And I presume there is no other member of the public wishing to address the board, so and nor are there any new UPD staff introductions. Is that correct?
Correct.
Okay, and that brings us then to the UPDAC Advisory Committee Report, which we had in writing. Were there any questions or comments regarding that?
I do want to note that that was for the June meeting. There is no meeting in July.
Correct.
Well, everyone's had a chance, I assume, to read that, so if there are no comments or questions on that report, let's move on to our consent agenda. And on our consent agenda this evening, our approval of the minutes of the July 14, 2020 regular board meeting, the monthly departmental reports from administration, planning and operations, and recreation, the action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, and approval of the monthly paid accounts payable. And if there are folks watching out there, just to make clear, under the rules of our consent agenda, it is the purview of any single commissioner to remove any or all of these items for separate discussion and action. And so I would ask if there is any commissioner wishing to remove anything from the consent.
Yes, I'd like to talk a bit more about the, so I'd like to take the administrative report out because I'd like to talk a bit about the UPDAC tree planting idea.
Okay. Any others? Okay, so remaining on the consent agenda are again approval of minutes of July 14, regular board meeting, the monthly reports from planning and operations and recreation, action to accept the philanthropy report and gifts listed with gratitude, and approval of the monthly paid accounts payable. Is there a motion that we approve these items in an omnibus fashion?
I move we approve them in an omnibus fashion.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded, and under the rules of our consent agenda, there is to be no discussion at this point. So I would like to hold again a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
And Nancy.
Aye.
And I too vote in the affirmative, so that carries unanimously. Okay, I guess, do you do you want to take up the administrative? Normally would take that up under probably new business, but do you want to take that up under reports ahead of the financial reports? Or would you like it later in the agenda, folks?
Doesn't matter to me.
Whatever suits you.
Okay, well, let's just take it up under new business.
What I wanted to ask about was, was my first comment is I think the idea of planting a tree for outgoing UPDAC members is a much better idea than a plaque. But what I wanted a little more information about it because I don't know if this is a blanket donation because certainly we've had people, not so much recently, but in the past, who were infrequent attendees.
We lost her.
You had to have at least 50% attendance or something like, have you lost me? Is that what you said?
I think you're back now.
Oh, okay. Okay, so how much was?
I got your message, Nancy. Did you want a response now or under new business? We can do it either.
It doesn't matter. We might as well finish it now, and then we'll be done with it.
Okay, I think the idea is we're always looking for better ways to recognize volunteer efforts. We plant a number of trees every year, and staff was thinking of ways to do, you know, do more with UPDAC or to kind of bring a little more added value to our volunteer service. So the idea, like we've done with staff, as we plant trees, we normally would, you know, purchase or get, we could dedicate them, if you will, to UPDAC through their service. Obviously, we don't currently have a, you know, I mean, we have a policy attendance. We don't keep roll call, and we've never enforced it. But I think in the staff hearts and minds, the idea that somebody would, you know, agree to serve on UPDAC and do so, you know, based on their best ability, would still show a real commitment. We've talked to many people that maybe couldn't make every meeting, but they still get the agendas, the minutes. You know, they're wanting to keep up with things. I think it's a probably rare occasion where we might have somebody drop off early or just, you know, maybe stop coming. Not saying we've never had it. We certainly could evaluate each person, or if the board had any recommendations on criteria, we could certainly incorporate that. But we started as a good faith effort just to honor people, but I do understand your point. We've had, you know, probably just a small handful, couple of people that either couldn't meet their obligation or maybe their attendance wasn't what we would like it, so we.
Well, of course, we want everybody to be there all the time. I don't mind setting a low bar, but I just feel that it's important to have some sort of minimum attendance level. So it's not just that they were willing to say yes, and then they never came to meetings.
Right.
And, you know, it's a, it's a difficult thing to, to figure out. But I just wanted, so I just wanted to put it out there so we could start thinking about it and talk about it. Make any decisions. I think the basic idea is fabulous.
Great. I have a suggestion, Nancy. Maybe when we get together next for our UPDAC planning study group, maybe we could discuss that and come up with some informal criteria, not changing bylaws. We certainly could. But, you know, is it reasonable, somebody served, you know, let's say, you know, a reasonable effort on their term in attendance, or didn't have any health considerations or any other, you know?
Right, exactly. I mean, life does interfere with a lot of things, and you certainly wouldn't. That, that to me is sort of an outlier. It's just, don't seem to care enough to show up. That was my concern.
I think our other hunch is probably those few individuals probably know that, and if they didn't receive a tree certificate, might not be put out or at least come back at it. You know, because we've had people apologetically, you know, say they're missing more meetings than they would care to or that they're able, and you're right, we have had a couple that have said yes and then, you know, drift off throughout the second and third year.
Yeah, or some even in the, well, I mean, yeah, we've had, anyway, that's, that's for deciding later, but I just wanted to put that out for discussion.
Great. I appreciate that. That helps. Thank you.
Well, I too agree that it's a terrific idea and far better than a plaque. I assume that we haven't always given a community service award to every UPDAC member, no matter their attendance level, but it might be a good idea to have some criteria for honoring people. Okay, we have approved it. Well, okay, we need to, we would, I would entertain a motion for receive the administration department report, since we hadn't done that as part of the consent agenda.
I'll be happy to move to accept your administrative report.
Second.
That's moved and seconded. Is there any further discussion on the point? Hearing none, again, we have to do a roll call vote even on something of this sort in these remote attendance circumstances. So starting with Roger.
Aye.
And LaShonda.
Aye.
Meredith.
Aye.
And Nancy.
Aye.
And I also vote in the affirmative, so we agreed to receive that report. That moves us on to the financial reports.
Okay, can you all hear me? Okay. Great. Okay, I'm going to be presenting the performance of the Urbana Park District for the month of July 2020. The first report that I'll be discussing is called the Revenue and Expenditure Report. This report shows the receipts and expenditures for the prior 12-month period, the budget for the current period, and the preliminary unaudited results for the three months ending July 31st. The first page of this report we call SOME1, and it is all funds except for the Capital Improvements Fund. So this really just gives us a look at our operating budget. Revenues for this period were, sorry, $2,684,000. This is an increase of 1.5 million since June, most of which was property taxes. 2.2 million of our total revenues are property taxes for this period, and we've received two property tax distributions for the year 2019. The biggest difference between this year and last year has been our earned revenues, which is this figure right here, $62,000. In, from May 1st through July 1st, or through July 31st, excuse me, 2019, the district earned $590,000 in fees compared to FY '21, where we've earned $62,000. So at the same point in the current year. And those fees are comprised of program revenues and rental fees, facility rentals. So we all know that that's due to coronavirus and the district being shut down for, and having all of our camps canceled, which is one of our major revenue generators. But we are starting to do some programs that involve fees. Our pool reopened on August 3rd. We talked about some of those things at our study session last month that we're doing to start earning some revenues. So we'll see where, where we end up at the end of the year. But the other thing that I wanted to let you all know in general, too, is just that this budget column in the middle column here is, is not quite accurate, as we've talked about, just because our projections for where we're going to be, because the coronavirus have changed so much. And I don't have all of that information ready to share with you, but I hope to present that information to the finance study group on August 28th, and then I'll be bringing that information to the board in September. Moving on, expenditures for this period were 1,790,000, which is a change of $577,000 since June. We have a surplus after three months, which means that there is an excess of revenues over expenditures paid of $894,000. Moving on to the next page, this is SOME2. This shows only the Capital Improvements Fund. The revenues for this, this three-month period were negative $12,000. This negative amount represents accrued interest from last fiscal year. So the interest was actually earned and recognized in FY '20, but it has not yet been received. So as the revenue is received, it will clear out this accrual. If that makes sense, it's kind of an accounting thing that we have to do at the very end of the fiscal year. And the reason this fund has quite a bit of interest is because we're holding the big bonds in interest-bearing accounts and CDs, and so we have $6 million invested, so there was quite a bit of accrual to make at the end of the year. Usually it's much smaller and would have cleared out by now. Expenditures for this period were $73,000. Expenditures exceed revenues. This leaves a net decrease in fund balance in the Capital Improvements Fund of $86,000 at the end of July. And finally, SOME2, SOME3 adds those first two reports together, and you can see that the ending fund balance for the entire district as a whole is $16,623,000. Following that are the summary reports for the individual main working funds, the general fund, the recreation fund, the museum fund, and the indoor pool. And I'm happy to entertain any questions that you may have about this report before I move on to the treasures report. All right. So with that, I'll go over the highlights of the treasures report. This report is the amount of cash that the district has on one day, July 31st, 2020. All 24 funds of the district are represented with where the cash is invested. The district has a grand total of $16,434,839.79 on July 31st. Page two of this report lists amount, at the top of the page lists amounts that we have in interest-bearing accounts. So of the $16,435,000 on hand, $15,222,000 is out in investments. The next section lists inter-fund loans, and in July, the payment was received from the Urbana School District for their operating share of the indoor pool. This allowed us to reverse the inter-fund loan that was between the recreation fund and the indoor pool that had appeared in the previous month's financial statements. And finally, this last section, page three, lists disbursements made for the month of July. Vendor, vendor payments match the paid accounts payable on the consent agenda, and total disbursements of funds for July was $610,000. We had three bi-weekly payrolls in July, which account for the larger-than-average expenditures given the current pandemic slowdown conditions that we're experiencing in the district. And I present the treasures report to you for approval.
I have a question first. I don't remember seeing social security on here very often.
It's on here every month. This is, it's okay. This is just the employer, this is the employer share that we're actually, this is an expense of the district that we pay every payroll.
Right, okay.
Probably just stands out since there's three lines of it this time.
Yeah. I guess I was expecting it, I was expecting to see IMRF as opposed to.
Yep, and that's a really good question, Nancy. IMRF is almost always on here, but we didn't make, our payment is due by the 10th of each month, and we didn't make the July payment until August 3rd. So in August, you'll probably see, because our last payroll wasn't until July 31st, so the turnaround time on that payment is going to be delayed because the payroll was so late in the month. And so probably in July, I'm sorry, in the next month's financial statement, we'll be doubling up, and we'll be paying July and August.
Okay, good. Thanks.
Good question.
I move we accept the treasures report for audit.
Second.
Michael, I think you're muted.
Sorry about that, folks. That's been moved and seconded, and I'm asking if there is any discussion or questions on the point. Hearing none, let's again do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
LaShonda.
Aye.
And Meredith.
Aye.
Nancy.
Aye.
And I also vote in the affirmative, so that carries unanimously and takes us on to the capital budget.
Okay, great. Let me share my screen with you, and I'll walk you through the capital budget changes as well. So in the, this first report, sorry, excuse me, the high, the areas highlighted with an asterisk are where there's been activity this period, so you can kind of follow along with the reports that way. In the Series 2019A budget, which is our big bonds, costs were paid towards the health and wellness facility design. In the 2020 budget, a purchase was made from PISO Native Plant Nursery for the prairie expansion at Meadowbrook Park, funded by a grant from the Illinois American Water. The first of three payments was made to the artist for the installment purchase of molecular reflection that was approved at the last board meeting. That's this $10,000 payment. $43.76 was paid for a replacement mower deck out of vehicles and equipment, and herbicide treatment was paid for, for Crystal Lake out of the water quality improvements line of our Crystal Lake Park improvements budget. In the 2019 cap, yes.
How, how are we doing on the whole on our vehicle replacement? Are we, are we pretty much keeping up? Are we where we wanted to be on that?
We are, I can.
Yeah, that's a great question for Andy.
And I can test my speaker, too, or my microphone while I do it. We're actually behind on that. We were, we got the custodial van in January, and we had the transit vehicle, Urbana, that was bid in the fall. We had a bid ready to go for two trucks, and we were notified that production has stopped, and it, we may not be ready to do bids on the trucks. We had a mower and a tractor that we have to wait on, all COVID-related.
Okay, so it's not lack of money, it's lack of production, it's lack of availability for the items.
Yeah, they shut down the production sites all spring and summer.
All right, so, well, I was more concerned about whether there being enough money in the pot to keep up with it.
Well, next year, we'll just have a lot more, hopefully, have a lot more. That money in 2020 will, you know, stay there for us, so we'll have 2021 and 2020, and then have, you know, twice as much vehicles and equipment.
Good, because there was one point where we were far behind, and it was lack of money as opposed to lack of opportunity.
I think we've, we've done a pretty good job with the schedule. I mean, before I was project manager as well. I mean, keeping up with the schedule and making sure we're putting money in every year so that we don't get too far behind.
Great. That's just what I needed to hear. Thanks.
Every once in a while, you know, if there's priorities we need to juggle, we'll analyze the condition of vehicles and maybe postpone a replacement by a year or two. But it gets tricky because other, then you just have a year that's really vehicle-heavy, so it's better to kind of keep it evenly spaced out. And we haven't, besides the production issues in this current year, you know, all of the other prior years, vehicle and equipment replacement budgets have been fully spent. So we've, we've maintained that level and that schedule every year.
That's terrific. I'm glad to hear that.
Good. Okay, so moving on to the 2019 capital budget, expenses were paid towards a tribute plaque, and a payment was made to the contractor for the saline habitat restoration project. In the 2018 capital budget, expenditures were on construction crew projects and on design work for the museum grant. That was down here. And then in the 2017 budget, there was a little bit of spending on, a payment was made to the Illinois EPA for permitting for the Crystal Lake Park rehab project that we're currently constructing. And finally, in the 2016 capital budget, payments were made towards the Crystal Lake Park One Way Road System Design and the Crystal Lake Park Master Plan update out of this line. And with that, Andy and Derek now have some updates for you on capital projects.
Hey, I'll start with the Crystal Lake Rehab Project. Stark's been moving very quickly, and so has the Tree and Brush Removal subcontractor. Those removals were finished by the end of last week. If you've been by the park, you've noticed some drastic changes, I'm sure. The contractor that Homer Tree Service, they're still on site. They're doing stump removals. They'll probably finish up tomorrow, if I had to guess. Stark's been focusing a lot of attention to site prep for the new playground and what we call the family game area. They'll be pouring more concrete this week and should be ordering and getting ready to get that playground delivered to us probably by mid-September. Then at that point, Keith on our staff will be able to take over and start working to get that installed through the fall, maybe into the winter. And we won't remove the current playground, of course, until the new one is finished, so we won't have any interruption in playgrounds. One of the main items for this week with Stark is the area between the sediment basin and what would be the new public kayak launch, and that's near the Carl parking lot section of the road on the far west end of the park. They've built basically two dams, and then they're draining the water out of that section in preparation for sediment removal. And so that area was identified as some of the deepest deposits of sediments in the lake remaining after the sediment basin itself had its cleaning a few years ago. And then that removal of those sediments in that area will help to extract much of the stored nutrients that are within the lake that contribute to the poor water quality. So that's something, if you're in the park this week, you're going to see a lot of activity in that area. Following that, they'll be working around the sediment basin itself and the roadway in that section. I do have some pictures. I wanted to try to start taking some pictures of the site, and then maybe just share, you know, five to 10 pictures every board meeting and kind of get close up some what's going on. I'm going to try to share my screen here. You all see my screen?
Yes.
Okay, so here's a picture that was taken a couple weeks ago, and I think it's just kind of a cool thing that Stark had to do. It's creating a bridge that goes from the road. The sediment basin bridge is basically to the left of this image, and it's a bridge out to the North Island. And so that's provided access for Homer to get in there and do a lot of the clearing on that island. And then here's kind of the current status of the makeup water fountain. So just as a reminder, this area will be kind of a more naturalized, stone blocks, tiered pools down to the lake. We'll still use the well water, but then it'll be, you know, vegetated and as part of the treatment for the water that goes into the lake. This is early in the preparation. This is where the new playground will go. You can see the large pavilion in the back. And then this is standing in that large pavilion, looking towards the playground area, what used to be sand volleyball. You can see a path that's been poured that goes to that playground, and then would wrap around and connect to the road where it kind of currently connects in there by the existing playground. And you can see one of the pads here. I don't know if you can see my cursor or not, but this is for the bags, the concrete bags, so they're an accessible amenity. And then on the opposite side, there's a connection for concrete as well to make those, everything accessible for the bags area. And you can see kind of in this area over here, this is new pads for those. picnic tables that will have the stencils, board games on them. So they've been working pretty heavily in this area here, starting to take shape and look really nice. And then I have just a view from the lake house. This is why Homer was out there. It just kind of shows how things have been opening up here along the lake edge. There are kind of, you can see that one of their big machines here, they're in process. I think my last one is on San Perry Bridge, looking towards the accessible fishing pier. On the left side, you can see how they've really, you know, it's a lot of focus really adjacent to the lake edge and how clear they've made this area. In this picture, it still has some stumps there, those stumps are removed. And then on the right side, you can see a lot of the invasive brush has been removed, but they had not yet halted off and chipped it. But it kind of gives a good idea of, of the look standing on a bridge or and looking through the lake.
Yeah, it's no wonder somebody asked Tom Kasich.
Right.
I've been surprised by how little inquiries we've had about the brush removal. I had one pre-contractor call and ask about, you know, the process by which Homer was selected. But I have no, no other calls or complaints, which is just amazing. We were really anticipating it. So I think staff did a great job of getting the word out. We were flying the neighborhood. We also AD flyered the houses directly adjacent to the overflow parking lot. Early on, we anticipated using that for some of the storage of the sediments that were coming out of the lake. And as that drew more near, we began to have some, some second thoughts about whether that would really be, I mean, the neighbors would be warm to. And in fact, when they're trenching in to put the silt fence in, we got a call from a neighbor who was very concerned about it. We did some more investigation and found that there was a better site, the South Phil of UC Woods, where we previously had done some brushing with a nature conservancy grant was open. The condition of the soil there was pretty subpar and adding some additional sediments and soils from this project would be a plus. And so we worked with Stark to relook at the materials there. But otherwise, you know, the, the public comment has been, I'd say supportive is what we've mostly been hearing. So it's a.
Well, we deserve a win at Crystal Lake Park, don't you think?
We do, we do. The other thing that I'll mention is that Andy, you know, alerted everybody to this today, but we did have a few fish that were, that were dying in that area where they're draining the lake to remove the sediments. Previously, when we did the sediment basin, we lost some, some fish as well. We did our best to rescue those which we could. And Andy's purchased some nets and we're ready to do the same as the water drops. I think the warm weather was probably much for those fish. Before this all started, we talked with IDNR about the project and they went so far as just to encourage us to drain the whole lake and just restock it. I think we had some concerns how that would go over with the public, you know, people really fishing there and it would take several years for it to rebound. And so with this approach, we'll, we'll limit the loss of fish and DNR is still interested in helping us restock it next year. We'll keep track of what kind of fish loss we have.
Okay, to kill fish, but not ghee.
Okay, there any questions on Crystal Lake? I was gonna also update on a project I've been updating monthly on is Lille Park.
I would, I would just like to make one comment. It was a very impressive machine that they were using to cut down those trees. I don't know if anybody saw it, but great big circular saw that was horizontal and it would grab the trunk and cut right through a tree. I mean, I was walking through and, and they took down, I think, three trees in the space of.
You're muted, Michael.
I have stopped talking. I was trying to turn it back over to Andy.
Okay. I just wanted to update on Lille Park as well. Work there in the last, you know, since the last board meeting has been progressing pretty well. If you remember, the last update, we were scheduling the archaeologist's second visit to review the connector path that goes from the new parking lot to the cottage. Everything went well during that review. That section of path is actually almost completely poured and complete at this point. And the contractor has completed the subgrade of the main parking lot and should be pouring, starting tomorrow morning. We anticipate that parking lot would be ready for use in early September. And once that's completed, we've reached back out to Dean Rose, who will be scheduling himself back on site to finish his gazebo enclosure with the ornamental gates. And he's planning on being out there in mid-September to do that. Be happy to answer any other questions?
It's looking good.
Thank you.
Okay. Is that, is that it for the capital budget report?
Yep, that's all I had.
That's all from me.
Okay. Alrighty, so that takes us forward then to the executive director's report.
Sure. Well, hello, everybody. Just wanted to compliment everybody, board, staff, Up Deck, the community on all the great work at Crystal Lake Park. It's taken a great amount of effort to get us there. Way back in the master plan update back in 2007, eight, I think the vision was cast. It's very exciting to see things continue. Obviously, we've had the pool project before that. But getting down to that south end of the park where a lot of activities and history has been made, probably back to the more original section of the park from way back in the 1880s to see it renovated is just very gratifying. I think everyone will be very pleased with the final product. Also, just wanted to compliment staff and the contractors working at the Lille site. It's been a complicated project. Obviously, with the University Avenue project going on literally next to them, we're right on top of them. They continue to do great work. It's looking really, really nice over, over there. Bill Gray stopped by the cottage today to talk about foundation things and he, and I looked at it and he was very complimentary. So coming from a civil engineer and a city, former city engineer, I, I feel like staff's done a great job there too. As you know, we're continuing to work with the Urbana School District on the intergovernmental agreement, I think that we presented at the study session. We've made our comments passed on to both groups attorneys and they're working on a next version or next draft of that to include the comments that the board shared with us. So we hope to have that. We do have a couple of options for approval coming up. We're looking at an executive session on either August 18th or the 21st, or we could probably rely on the study session, September 1st. So our goal is to try to get that updated and reviewed and on the agenda for approval. But we'll continue to work on that till that issue gets resolved. I'd mentioned a few months ago, we're working on a number of sculpture projects. We do have three new sculptures planned to come to Urbana. The COVID situation has really kind of set things back, both in Chicago with getting pieces released from that show and the Peoria Riverwalk show where one of the other pieces is coming from, but we've got some really good locations. Working with each artist and one of the artists is in South America and we're trying to communicate with her and find a proxy that might make that sculpture move a little bit easier. So we're pleased on that. But we'll keep you up to date. There could be some changes or delays, but I think we're starting to focus and zero in on, on that. Also wanted to compliment the rec staff and the work that Janet and her staff have been doing on the great art doors. There's a couple of new interesting pieces of artwork that have come out of that. I think two are slated for sure for the Urbana Parks sites. We're looking at locations, working with that group. But those are really the fun, interesting things I think that we can do and really appreciate Spurlock Museum for thinking of this opportunity. As the COVID situation probably indicated, they might not be able to do some other things. This is a new opportunity and we're very excited to see what comes of that. Just want to update us on our health and wellness fundraising effort. We had a very, very good meeting with CCS, that's our consulting fundraising group. They've been excellent leaders. I think we had a good discussion at our last meeting and we're also reaching out to any foundation members or board members, if you, if you're interested, that might want to sit through the brief or short training that CCS has that really, we feel helps prepare everybody to meet with donors and really puts a lot of emphasis on that front end preparation. I know I'm getting anxious thinking about getting everything scripted out and just really be prepared and on top of our game. Obviously, I think that's something they excel in and give us the confidence. So again, if you didn't have training and you'd like to do that, I think we're planning a second round. Just let us know and we'll get us connected. I think there probably likely to be some board interviews if you haven't already done that. I think that's in the work also. And we'll also be talking with Up Deck as well as we go. Likely we'll be talking about giving opportunities with each of our, what I call in-house groups. So anticipate that coming forward.
Tim, have we, have we talked at all about essentially the price tag that we have on naming opportunities?
Yes, and we've got a little more advanced. We started talking about putting together, we need a tool or a brochure or some, something graphic I'm envisioning. You know, that somebody could look at and would have, let's call it a price menu. So you could quickly look at, you know, the overall options with some jump out prices that kind of indicate what things might cost. Kind of in that discussion, we included CCS and I think they would like to maybe encourage us to think about that in a little more detail, about really trying to come up with, you know, cost and pricing options that really are probably justified. I, I think some of their thinking is a little bit, I'm going to say newer, different or nuanced than how we do. Typically, we've looked about at half the cost. And if somebody could agree to meet that, I think they would, they see enhanced values on certain spaces and certain opportunities there. So we just want to have that discussion and make sure that we're asking, you know, and placing the right values on things. You know, we don't typically get to do very large infrastructure building projects. We do a lot of park work like Crystal Lake. But really trying to get this right is very important. So we're going to explore some new ideas, come back to the board with any recommendations on that and share that information. But again, I think they can help us put together the kind of information that they know donors respond to as opposed to us, well, let's try this, or maybe they'll like that. I think they'll help zero us in on this works and it works all the time, you know, try this.
And when, when is, are we planning to start the campaign?
I think we have a few more weeks out. We're doing some preliminary work, but it, it's coming up fast. I think, you know, remember we have until December to complete this. So I would say within the next three to four weeks, we'll probably be sitting down with people and have schedules. It could even be sooner than that, but we're making sure.
We don't have a set start date yet.
Not yet.
Okay.
And I think we have a couple of meetings coming up, pre-meetings, and then Thursday's our regular group steering meeting. So we'll be sharing back and forth. Again, I think it's going to probably, when I say go fast, the preparation and getting to that point in the process is fast. Obviously, we have to take the time to get connected with folks, set up schedules, you know, based on their convenience and availability. But I think the goal would be to, within short order, start working through that. Obviously, if we could get a few successes off, you know, that first round, those are things that can help encourage. So we're really trying to follow CCS lead and see what they have in store for us. I can tell you the enthusiasm on both staff, foundation and board is really high and I was talking with Bill Gray today about it and, you know, we agreed, it's, it is a tough time to ask people for, you know, a gift. But on the other hand, you know, this is a really important facility and it really does speak to the health and wellness for Urbana. If we really are concerned about a health situation now and in the future, this really could be a critical, you know, facility. So we'll see. And again, I continue to urge our board to think about, you know, doing as much as we could to make this a reality, even if it took several phases. You know, I was talking with Bill about how long it has taken to kind of get into this position of looking at an indoor, you know, facility. And it's just hard to, if you, if you can't get it started, it's hard to re-energize back up to get to a new start. And so we'll, we'll see. But we're claiming success now and expect good things to come out of our meetings.
Any more sense from Springfield about the park grant?
I have not, unless any of our planning staff have heard. I don't believe, I'm sure they would let us know, but they might have anything to chime in if they do. So we'll keep, keep poking Springfield in our, our leadership and see what, what we can learn there. Just, did that answer everyone's, your questions on that, Nancy?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay, great.
We don't have any new news, but Kara did reach out to DNR on a few grant questions about a month ago. And at that time, she said that it would probably be a few more months before they made a formal announcement. So I've been thinking September, October, possibly November.
Okay, but you're not anticipating something like Illinois football and they're going to say, ah, gee, well.
Well, you know, at staff level, we've talked about that. I, I mean, I would urge us all to be prepared, you know, for anything. Wouldn't be the first time we've had grant programs pulled, the rug right out, postponed or delayed for two or three years. You know, various reasons, but yes, I think that's, that's probably wise to think like that. On the other hand, you know, the logic of getting things started and people back to work and critical facilities in place.
Yep.
Couldn't think of a better time.
No, I agree.
On that hand, because every, every community is looking for hope and opportunity right now. So we hope we're in that group.
Yeah.
Keep you all posted. Monday, we had our typical capital meeting, but we started to go and look at our five-year capital and you know, that's always fun and interesting, but also sobering because we have a lot of great works in the works. But certainly we have limited capital dollars. And so making sure that, you know, we're moving on areas we can move on is really critical. So we'll be sharing more of that as we go. I did follow up with Mr. Steve Miller. He visited with us at the study session, interested in skate parks. He, I reached out and he was on vacation this week, willing to call. I said, no, no, wait till you come back. But we wanted to share a few opportunities. Likely there'll be future project opportunities that we might, you know, be able to fold in or consider, but it's never too early to start discussions, find out what's going on, new in the skate, skate park world and finding out about any potential resources or, you know, individuals or groups that might be able to work with us on, on an idea like that.
Is he interested as an individual or does he represent a group?
Yeah, I, it's interesting because I didn't recognize the name, you know, in the, I think when he came to the public session. But the city of, he had reached out to the city, someone at the city first, and they forwarded his interest. And I think he's a skateboarder, has a long interest in it. He's a real enthusiast of the sport. So I think we want to continue to talk about that.
Sure.
And the potentials, you know, of, of timing and where something like that could go. We really, if, you know, if we're going to really consider it, we should consider every aspect. You know, give it, give it a careful consideration like we typically do, but especially with future capital and investments, we really want to be intentional about that. So we're excited about that, that conversation. Let's see, I think we also want to find out a little more about Champagne's skate park. The full-size scaled one, what we, I call the bowl or the, you know, the big dish. And then they have a smaller unit facility at the Sunset Park site up on Staley Road and just find out if it's still in high demand, if there's a lot of users, what condition, any issues, just to find out what, you know, how the facilities we currently have in the area are being utilized.
Yeah, and doesn't Philo or Villa Grove have one as well?
I'm not sure. And that's another thing we probably should do is an inventory of other sites.
There is, because we're heading south. You sure? Does that seem right, Meredith?
Villa Grove?
Philo?
Got the word? Or Philo? Villa Grove.
Or General to South.
Got it.
Yep, yep, that's right.
Obviously, those are things we could take a look at, you know, just to see what area folks are offering. And again, when, it's been a number of years since we looked at that as a rec activity. So it's not surprising it's, you know, revisiting us. And that things might have changed in the, in the skateboard world and what's being offered and, you know, vendors providing equipment. Lastly, I wanted to mention, again, compliment the park district for being a host for the upcoming East Central Illinois Master Naturalist Native Plant Sale. We did that. It's been going a few years, but having an in-town site at the planning and operations has been a real convenient location. I'm pleased to be associated and we've enlisted, I've gotten CCDC Foundation on board to be a sponsor. Little history there, CCDC, my connection with that, we promoted for many years the Wondell Tree Trust and had success. I think our moniker there was planting 6,000 trees in Champagne County. I think our moniker there was planting 6,000 trees in uh Champagne County. Unfortunately, many of those trees were probably not ideal species. Um, Emerald or the ash trees were a mainstay. Uh, probably mostly non-native trees. Um, and so as information in the world catches up with us, obviously, this is a, I think, a much stronger um offer to the public and it's often difficult to find plants like that. So as a service and a convenience, I hope folks really take advantage of it. So uh, stay tuned for that. I think the details are getting worked out and dates will be selected for that. But I can answer any other questions you may have. That's all I had to add to the report.
Okay, if there are no further questions from commissioners, let's uh move on to the president's report. Um, I, in terms of upcoming meetings, we have a, and has yet to be determined a special meeting for review of our semi-annual review of our executive session minutes. Um, I don't know how soon we are likely to have a date on that. Are you aware yet, Tim?
I think it looked and sounded like the 18th was a preferred date, certainly for Matt, and I think we're trying to arrange it for weather because we'll be meeting outside. So looking a little bit closer to the uh weather pattern, at least the projected.
Yeah, we were, we were still waiting to hear back from Matt about his availability. But I think the plan is August 18th will be the executive session, and then if that is a rain date, we'll move it to the 21st if Matt's available. He said his preferred date was the 18th, which is our preferred date as well. So um, but we just heard that today. So I think Kelsey will be getting the word out here tomorrow, probably.
We hope those dates still line up with the board's availability. Let us know if your schedules do change. Um, but that is the, at least projected schedule.
And we hope to do something similar in September to be able to discuss salaries uh with the board and executive session. Um, after we have more budget information. This is kind of a test run to go over the executive session minutes and all of that with Matt, and then we'll see how the format goes with the rate, with the date and the rain date.
Okay, and we have a study session scheduled for the first of September. And again, uh, a, a, exact topic of that to be determined, uh, potentially the intergovernmental agreement with school district if we don't manage to get that taken care of at the uh previous executive session meeting. And uh, lastly, September 8th will be our regular board meeting where we are expecting uh additional bid approvals to be coming through. So um, that's all I have. Uh, moving on to liaison reports, the finance study group. Uh, we had intended to meet last Friday. Uh, staff thought that they needed a little more time to get some of the numbers together to have them a more productive meeting. And that meeting is now scheduled for the 28th of August. Um, is there anything from the UPD Policy Study Group to report?
We don't have a report. We have not met.
And uh, moving on to Urbana Parks Foundation, Roger?
Met yesterday. Um, we welcomed two new foundation members, good, good foundation members. Mary Ann Downey is uh a recently retired from the U of I Foundation. Uh, and uh, I think is gonna be a real asset. Uh, Jean Paley, who's uh the, uh, who's on UpDak currently and uh uh, just finished her, her term as chair, um, is also on the foundation now. Um, Laura Akins and Emily Briner from CCS were there to kind of walk the foundation because a number of those folks um are, are not on the steering committee, but to kind of walk them through what CCS is going to do. Um, we talked a bit about what the role was of the foundation. Um, with respect to that, that the Park District would have the lead role, but we would hope that the foundation would be very active uh in supporting um what the district does and, and also in fundraising. And that's about it.
Any questions for Roger on that? Okay, uh, move on then to the UpDak Planning Study Group. Is there anything new to report there?
No, we haven't met, but I think we will. I mean, when we, when we do next meet, we will talk about the, the tree planting. And anything else anybody thinks we should talk about, if they have any questions?
Okay, then, there are no, no questions on any of this. That moves us on to old business. And the only item there is, if there was any old business removed from the consent agenda, and there was not. Uh, takes us to new business. We had, item A was action to approve the intergovernmental agreement uh with the school district. We had that on the agenda in case we had a more complete and finalized document available this evening. Clearly, we do not. So uh, at this point, I don't think there's anything to discuss. And that takes us to action to award the uh Crystal Lake Park Family Aquatic Center, Center Exterior Wood Receiling Project.
Okay, um, after uh, a few years of operation of the outdoor pool, we um started to notice some discoloration. Um, primarily on the ends of the glue lamp beams on both the bathhouse uh buildings. Um, that discoloration, you know, since that time is, has worsened. Um, and it affected areas on the underside of the exterior wood surface as well. Um, we believe that it's caused from uh UV light degrading the original um varnish and then exposing it to water and then that water then um, has discolored the wood and it's made it um pretty unsightly uh for the facility. Uh, I think two or three years ago, we started to do um test locations with different cleaning methods and products. Um, we started to discuss options um for, you know, mitigating the issue with some painting contractors that we had on site for other projects or at different parks and asked them to swing over to take a look. Uh, we talked with ratio architects, uh, paint and stain suppliers and company representatives. Um, ultimately, it was determined um it'd be best to contract for uh, full sanding down to the bare wood of all the exterior wood surfaces. Um, and then uh resealing with uh two coats of uh sealant um to bring it back to its original um aesthetic. I think Derek talked to a uh technical representative uh for uh specifications on that new sealer. And um, it's what we ended up specifying for our bid. And um, that sealer is typically used on log cabins. Um, so we believe it should provide us uh more effective uh long-lasting protection. Um, I think if it, if it works on log cabins, it should hopefully work for our uh pools as well. Um, we ended up distributing bids on um, starting August 3rd and provided it to 19 different companies. Uh, three companies submitted bids uh last Thursday. Uh, Boron Russo was the low bid and uh tonight we're recommending uh to award that contract. Uh, it's a base bid of $30,300 and then we're additionally recommending um, a 15% contingency that would amount to uh $4,545. And, you know, funds for this project comes from our um outdoor pool renewal and replacement fund called the R and R Fund. Um, sets aside money every year uh to continually update and improve the facility. That fund currently is a little uh above $107,000. Um, and we have no transfers coming in um during our canceled 2020 season. Um, we do have some additional expenditures expected uh from the fund this year with the CO2 uh transition, um, which shouldn't be, I think the estimate was around um seven or $8,000. And then we have um three new shade structures that are actually at the site and waiting to get installed here in the next couple of weeks. So we still have a, a decent amount of money uh left even after the um resealing project to be able to keep um updating in future years. Um, with that, I'm happy to answer any questions if anybody has any.
I have a quick question. Um, and I know we talked about this a little bit before. Were there any uh minority-owned businesses that bid on any of the projects?
On the wood resealing project?
Yeah.
I don't believe so.
And do you know if information was filtered out for them to have an opportunity to do so?
If it was filtered to do so, I'm not sure. We publicized in the paper and um sent to, I think, 19 different groups that we know of in the area.
Well, Shonda, I, I can expand a little bit more on that. Uh, our, our process was to send it to every painting contractor that's bid on our work in the past. Um, and that took place, I think, on a Monday. Um, by Thursday of that week, we weren't hearing a whole lot from people. So we contacted the uh union reps for both carpenters and for painters in our area. They sent us their list for every painting contractor they work with in our region. We sent it to every one of them. So I feel like we, we got pretty extensive distribution. I'm, I'm not aware of, of, of a list of, of, of minority painters, but that's something that we could, I will research more and see if there's a, a, a group that I'm not aware of or a list that I'm not aware of that we can uh more specifically make sure we're getting it to, to, to any groups like that. But I also think that um on a project like this, we, 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 our goal was to get it in everybody's hands as we possibly could. Um, so I'm, I'm hopeful that, that some of those bidders were, I, I can't say for certain. Um, I know that the um three bids we got are groups that we've worked with before. Um, so I, I, I don't know that, yeah, I wouldn't say that they are, but, but um, I'm, of all the groups we sent it to, I'm hopeful that somewhere.
Mariah Madison would be a good contact. There is a directory with several businesses within the community. Unless you're, I mean, I know most of the time it's local-owned businesses that you reach out to, um, or surrounding areas. Um, just a suggestion.
Okay, can you repeat that name again?
Mariah Madison.
I was just gonna add too, I think that's really something we've talked about for a number of years at the Park District. We've talked with the city and the school district and we haven't found an ideal way to improve that. But I think that's something we need. Maybe we could do it both either formally or informally. We've talked about like, I'm, I'm almost wondering like a job fair kind of approach where we could have a contractor invited group just to making contacts, making sure people are seeing our bids, finding our bids, um, looking at um, aspects of how we can do that better. Yeah, I, kind of the feedback I've heard across other park districts is, you know, when you go the policy approach, people figure a way to undermine that. So I'm not saying that's a bad approach, uh, but that, there may be other more effective approaches. Making connections, reaching out, talking with people, kind of almost word of mouth, who's available, who's, who does what kind of work. Um, so I think that's, I think that's important. Otherwise, you know, we tend to continue to rely on previous contractors, um, that sort of thing. And how do we, um, you know, getting that information uh about minority uh businesses, you know, finding out who they are, where they are, what kind of work they do. That's just really, really a, a kind of a new avenue that we need to pursue.
I see that there's a, a group I'm looking at right now by, by Black Sham, Shamana. We'll, we'll look at that as well.
I think the other thing too is, I'm always wondering if contractors really know that the Park District has work. You know, a lot of times, you know, our locals that have been around a long time, they do. But I'm not sure everyone thinks of us. They might think of other type of construction work. But our local agencies, you know, all of them have local work, township, city, school, library, um, Park District. So um, we'd like to learn more about that.
Any other questions or comments? Is anyone willing to make a, a motion that we approve this?
I'm gonna reward the Crystal Lake Park Aquatic Center Exterior Wood Receiling Project in the amount of $30,300 with a contingency of $4,545 to Boron Russo of Champagne, Illinois.
Second.
That's been moved and seconded. Are there any further questions or discussions on the point? Hearing none, let's do a roll call vote, starting with Roger.
Aye.
Um, Rashonda?
Aye.
Meredith?
Aye.
Nancy?
Aye.
And I also vote in the affirmative for that, so that carries unanimously. We awarded that contract. Uh, one other thing of a similar nature, I think, ought to be added to the list of potential improvements coming up is that I think the top side of the, the slide tubes have faded in a way that makes them look uh quite different color than the undersides. And I'm wondering if there's ultimately going to be anything that we can do about that and by way of keeping the, the uh facility looking crisp.
Michael, there, there is. Um, and uh, Sholon Park District actually did it about three years ago. Um, we were surprised by what a reasonable price they got to, to do that. Uh, and we contacted um that same individual. Um, to see if he'd come and take a look at our facility. Uh, we've since talked to him about the indoor uh aquatic center and the slide tower there, because he does that type of painting as well. Um, we have yet to get him to, to come on site, although he, um, he keeps promising he'll come and take a look. Um, we have solicited bids from other vendors that do that type of work and uh the numbers we've gotten are, are pretty shocking. Uh, upwards of $75,000, $80,000. Um, and when I talked with them about it, they said that it's, it's very unusual for an aquatic center to, to recoat those slides uh after five or six years. Um, usually, a, an agency wait, wait quite a while. They focus more their efforts on, on keeping the, the seams uh caulked and, and waxing the interior of the slide, which we have been doing. Um, but I agree with you and I know it's something that Corky and I talk a lot about because it, it looks very faded. Um, we'll continue to see if we can get interest from, from uh this gentleman who did the Sholom um slides, because uh he, he seems to have a, a much more reachable approach.
Just gonna add also, um, both of those items, the slides and the wood beams, you know, they're both items. We talked about a lot in the preliminary planning, in the planning and construction. You know, basically what we learned is, you know, wood everywhere fades and dries out and, um, but we really wanted the natural look. You know, we considered metal and concrete and other materials that would be maybe more durable, but even metal will fade in the sun. So repainting is, you know, a critical need. So we, in the end, decided that wood was an attractive feature. And on the slides, you know, a lot of facilities we visited, we did see um some aging and sun, you know, wash of that. So trying to find a good vendor and making sure that we can maintain that in a reasonable cycle is definitely on the radar.
I, I would just like to thank the board for their forward thinking on that R and R plan. Um, we have done many a things um with those R and R dollars um that have helped us uh keep our promise to our community. Uh, we did the locker rooms last year. We've done the floor. Um, we've put new lockers in.
Yep.
Um, so we're getting ready to add three shade structures and a customer service station that's gonna be permanent. Um, and then doing the beams and again, when, when I heard about the slides and how cheap of a project that was for the value on, at uh Champagne Park District, I was right on Derek, like, hey, let's check these guys out. Um, we just have not been connected yet, but we will keep trying on that. And again, it's all um, works a lot better when we're putting dollars aside to, to maintain it. So it was great forward thinking.
You know, Corky, the other approach that we could take is we could um bid it, uh, and just see if, if he'll, he'll furnish a bid. Uh, he, he really wants to come on site and look at it before he does. So um, the groups have He, he really wants to come on site and look at it before he does, so the groups have bid it from off-site, have bid the ones that have had some of the more frightening numbers.
Are they, are they fairly comparable, the Champagne's and ours? The slides?
Yeah. I mean, the, the lengths are pretty comparable and, I mean, they did all their slides for less than 20,000. So it's definitely worth trying to track this guy down and he did a fantastic job. They looked brand new when he was done. So anyhow, just wanted to put that two cents in.
Well, thanks for chiming in. Item C is action on any new business removed from the consent agenda and there was, there none. Well, there is none pending, that's already been taken care of. Which brings us to comments from commissioners. Are there any further comments commissioners would like to bring forward? My goodness.
Wrong.
I knew, perhaps a new for. Well, I, I just would like to chime in on perhaps a little bit of what, what was a, a previous topic. It's pretty astonishing to go through a Crystal Lake Park right now and see how much change is going on. I encourage other commissioners to get in there and take a look if you have not already. So anyone else with something to say? Hearing none, I believe we have exhausted our agenda and I will declare us adjourned for the evening. Thank you all.